Welcome, everybody. I'm gonna start with the introductions. Welcome to the City Council District Three Candidates Forum on Preservation Issues. I am Andrew Berman, Executive Director of Village Preservation, and I will be moderating tonight's forum. This is our final 2025 Candidate Forum on Preservation Issues, rather. You can view our other recent forums with Candidates for Mayor, Borough President, and City Council Districts One and Two on our website and our YouTube page, and at the link which William will be dropping in the chat as we speak. I'll also note that we've built a campaign to educate current and prospective city leaders about how preservation and affordability not only aren't in conflict, as some claim, but complement each other, and we've created a mechanism for the public to communicate this message to officials as well. We've dropped a link in the chat for you to find out more about that effort and to participate in it if you wish as well, so please just go to our chat. Now, a quick note about the format for tonight before we begin. Each candidate will be allowed a brief opening and closing statement. In between, I'll be asking a series of questions of all candidates. Following that, I'll also be asking questions of all candidates chosen from those offered by the audience, so you can drop your suggested questions into the Q and A at any time, starting now. All responses from candidates will have enforced time limits, typically around one minute, and the order of responses will change with each question. We plan to wrap by 7:30 at the latest. Please note that Village Preservation is a 501(c)(3) organization, so we cannot endorse or recommend candidates. What we can do is provide an opportunity for you to learn more about the candidates, their positions, records, and perspectives, to help inform any decisions you may choose to make. This also means that candidates cannot discuss here or provide any information about their campaigns, though that information is, of course, readily publicly available. Now, if in the course of the evening you have any technical problems or questions, please email RSVP@villagepreservation.org, and we'll be monitoring that and get back to you as quickly as possible if we see that you have any problems. Tonight's forum is being recorded, and the video will be shared with all who registered, as well as with the general public, and placed on our website and our YouTube page. So, without further ado, let me introduce our candidates in alphabetical order. First, we have Eric Botcher, who is the current City Council Member for District Three, and he is running in the Democratic primary. Next, we have Louis Flores, who is a community activist, and he is running in the general election in November. And we have Dominic Romeo, who's a community activist, building superintendent, and founder of New York City Building Supers. He's running in the Democratic primary and as an independent in the general election. So, we're gonna start with a one-minute opening statement from each of the candidates, and we are going to start that in alphabetical order, so Eric, we will start with you.
Thank you so much, Andrew, and to everyone at Village Preservation, and thanks so much to everyone who's joining us tonight. Eric Botcher, I have the honor and privilege of representing the West Village, Chelsea, Hell's Kitchen, and West Soho, Times Square, Garment District, Theater District in the New York City Council. And I'm so proud to be here with you, asking for your support for my reelection. I'm very proud of my record on historic preservation that extends prior to my time in office, and it's critical to New York in so many respects. Look, we could live in many, many other cities for a lot less money, but we wouldn't, and we won't, because we love New York and we love what New York is, and it's rooted in our historic nature or historic architecture, our historic neighborhoods. We have to manage the growth in New York City in a way that protects what's important to us.
Thank you, Eric. Next, we're gonna go to Louis Flores. Louis, unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you to everybody for having us. Thank you to Village Preservation for hosting this event tonight. I'm running for City Council because New York City has become unaffordable to many, many people. We're going through a housing crisis where the incumbent believes it makes sense to demolish public housing. We're living through an affordability crisis where people are complaining about the price of eggs. Something has to be done. We're dealing with government failure and political paralysis in the face of a changing landscape in terms of our economics, in terms of climate change. And I believe that we're living in the consequence of a failure of leadership, and I'm here running for office to change things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then Dominic.
Hi. Thank you so much for this invitation. It's an absolute honor for me. My name is Dominic Romeo, born and raised in Hell's Kitchen, been here my entire life. So, District Three has always been special to me at a very young age, being deeply involved in the city organization, and later on with ACT UP and Housing Works and Vocal New York. And I'm also an activist, but my story really is a bit unique because I've lived through the homeless shelters for five years and had gone through three of them, and understand how important it is to have somewhere to live. You can't have any plans when you don't have a home, or if you're worried about a home. So, that's why affordable housing is near and dear to my heart. As many of you know, I started a group of superintendents to fight the city because City Council...
I'm gonna stop you there because we've hit the minute, but...
Oh, my apologies.
That's okay. We'll be able to get to some of the other points you want to raise. So, let me start with the first question that we're gonna ask of all candidates. Tell us, what is your record on historic preservation issues? And what historic preservation efforts have you supported or led, and what was your role? And this time, we're gonna reverse the order, so Dominic, we're gonna start with you, and again, it'll be a one-minute time limit.
Okay, excellent. Preservation in general for me is really important. I've been supportive of the Elizabeth Street Garden. I'm extremely upset by that being possibly turned into yet another high-rise. I also was a member when I was a kid for the Forty-Ninth Street Garden, and I am fully aware of how important those community areas are, and also the Tony D'Appolito Recreation Center. I have not worked with Tony Recreation Center personally, but it's also near and dear to my heart, as well as even the Fulton Projects, for example. We shouldn't be tearing down things that the neighbors and our community adore. So, I'm a preservationist at heart, and I just say no to it all.
Thank you. So, next, then, we will go to Louis.
Hello. Yes. The biggest threat to the historic preservation efforts of Village Preservation is the nonstop gentrification that is the official policy of the incumbent Eric Botcher. When the incumbent was the Chief of Staff for the immediate predecessor, Corey Johnson, there was more luxury housing built in this district than in any other district in New York City. And that's a testament to the fact that the historical neighborhoods in this district are under threat by nonstop gentrification. If the owner of Hudson Yards is allowed to take over NYCHA, they plan to demolish all of the lots. That is a threat to the Chelsea historical neighborhood fabric and aesthetic that we live with and that we appreciate. And I am gonna oppose any threat to our historical sites.
Thank you, Louis. And then Eric Botcher.
Historic preservation's been part of my story for a long time. As many people know, I was on the board of the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative for a long time, fighting for a tenement historic district on the Lower East Side. In my capacity as a staffer at the City Council, I worked closely on the expansion of the South Village Historic District for LGBTQ sites, including the Stonewall Inn, Cafe Chino on Cornelia Street. As a City Council Member, I'm very proud to have supported the landmarking of Fifty West Thirteenth Street, the Jacob Day residence. I helped save the Colored School Number Four, just north of the village, one of the original and last remaining schools for African-American students dating back to the middle of the nineteenth century from demolition, securing $6 million for its rehabilitation. I helped push back on cuts to the Landmark Preservation Commission.
Wait, Eric, I'm gonna pause you there, but I'm sure we'll be able to get to some of the other points in the questions that are gonna follow. So, here's the next question. If elected to the upcoming term representing District Three in the City Council, what historic preservation efforts do you want to work on? And do you anticipate supporting during the next term in the City Council? And this time, we're gonna start with Louis.
I believe that it's... Thank you for that question. I believe that it's important to work on preserving the low-rise buildings, the townhouses, and the low-rise buildings throughout the West Village, Chelsea in particular, and those that remain in Hell's Kitchen. I believe, as I've said already before, the biggest threat to the historic sensibility to our city, to our neighborhoods in the city, is gentrification. So, I believe that it's the only responsible response that you should be expecting from people in government is to stop the nonstop gentrification that we are experiencing in this district. And that means saying no to community-crushing, zone-busting development, and that's what you can count on me for.
Great. Next, we're gonna go to Eric.
I'm pushing hard for a series of landmarks as part of the efforts in Midtown South. We have a long list of properties from Community Boards Four and Community Board Five. We're working closely with the LPC to get as many of those landmarked as possible. I think that a big part of the next few years is gonna be recognizing that while affordable housing and housing writ large gets built in New York, we have to do it in a way that preserves our historic assets. And I, like you, Andrew, reject the notion that historic preservation and housing development need to be at odds. I think that they can work hand in hand with smart planning and strong oversight.
Thank you. And Dominic.
Yes, thank you so much for that question. I am on the boat with preserving our neighborhood, particularly the smaller, lower-rise buildings, the hundred-year-old buildings the most, but mainly where my focus really wants to be is with Fulton Projects. I grew up in Hell's Kitchen, but I hung out in the Fulton Projects when I was a kid, and they are near and dear to my heart. And to hear some of my friends who still live there and their mothers are still there saying that we don't know what we're going to do, we don't trust the government, we don't know if we're gonna be moved back, we feel that once we move out, we'll never be able to go back to where we were. And I believe them because we've seen this time and time again when there was a politician who backed a certain policy that pushed them from one area to the next. Most of the time, they never do come back, so Fulton Projects is definitely on my radar.
Hey, thank you. And there definitely will be a question about NYCHA further down the road. So, further in this series of questions specifically about landmarking, and then we're gonna kind of move into some slightly related but different topics. Village Preservation has documented a huge drop in landmark designations citywide, done by the City's Landmarks Preservation Commission in recent years, but especially in our neighborhoods. Do you see this as a problem? And if so, how would you address it as a City Council Member? And more generally, what other kind of changes would you like to see regarding how the City's Landmarks Preservation Commission works? And this time, we're gonna start with Dominic.
That's a great question. I've been thinking about this a lot and actually how to resolve this one. I do feel that we are losing our landmarks and that landmarks are important to preserving our neighborhood. And how I would go about figuring out how to make sure that our neighborhood remains a community is, I would figure out who is on these boards that do the preservation and the landmarking. I would wanna find out more about them. I would also want to see how much influence a City Council Member has in order to change some of those members, to make sure that we are putting people on those committees that actually do care for our neighborhood. So, strategically speaking, I would have to find out more about the Landmark Board itself in order to help and then influence them to create more landmarks in the Village and in Chelsea and District Three.
Great, thank you. Next, we're gonna hear from Eric.
A big part of this is gonna depend on who the next mayor is. The mayor appoints the chair and the staff of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, the composition of the commission itself. So, we need to make this an issue in this mayoral campaign. I don't believe that it has been, and it should be. The mayoral candidates need to be asked about this, and their plans need to be outlined, because who they appoint is gonna be determinative in many ways. It is critical that as the city grows and changes, that we preserve our historic fabric, and that involves an LPC that is values-aligned and properly staffed and properly funded in the budget, something that I'm absolutely committed to.
Right. And Louis.
Yes, I believe the answer to this question lies in the fact that when you stated that in this district, there are fewer approvals for landmarks, that that's a function of the fact that the official housing and land use policy for this district is nonstop gentrification. And whether it is the mayor that appoints the commission, we have to look at the people who are appearing at this candidate forum tonight. The incumbent has been a rubber stamp for the mayor's nonstop gentrification. He was a rubber stamp as the Chief of Staff for the predecessor council member for this district under the last administration. If we are gonna be serious about preserving the historic feel and aesthetic of our neighborhoods, we have to start saying no to community-crushing developments.
Okay, thank you. All right, next question, a little bit of a different focus. How would you help retain and support small, independent businesses and cultural institutions, which are so vital in our neighborhoods and of which we've lost so many in recent years? And this time, we're gonna start with Louis.
Yes. For a long time, community activists have been proposing an idea called the Small Business Job Survival Act. It's a form of helping small businesses afford their rents, including looking at how much are they being charged for rent, giving them tools or mechanisms to dispute their rent if it's too much, or other legal protections against being evicted. And we have to look at the fact that in this district, small businesses can't survive. I was outside of London Terrace, and I was told that a marijuana shop was gonna move in into London Terrace, but people became enraged. And the fact is that the market conditions exist today that only basically legalized drug dealers can afford their rent and nobody else. Somebody has to say no to these kinds of conditions.
Okay. Next, Dominic.
Hi. This is another interesting question. I think how I would go about doing this is to work with City Council to try to create some legislation that requires an owner to lease their storefront within a specific amount of time, let's say, three months, because what I find the most that's happening is that these storefronts will remain empty for six months to a year, allowing the owners of these buildings to get the highest bid. But I feel like at some point, City Council has to step in and say, okay, you have three months to lease this. You have to occupy that space, and therefore, that would bring down the rent because they're not looking for the highest bidder, number one. And then, number two, safety, I think, is important. Being proactive with our police officers, they're not all bad, and I do feel a lot of the businesses have closed down because of the crime and the flash mobs that are stealing off of their shelves, so those two things I would support.
Okay, thank you. Next question, just a little more specifically or focus.
You skipped me, Andrew. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Eric.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out. Please, we do wanna hear your response on that one.
So, we work, my team and I, work very closely with small businesses every day to address the problems, large and small, that they face at a very basic level, ensuring that our neighborhoods are safe and clean, where they can do their business and attract and retain customers. The City Council has passed legislation allowing small business owners to cure fines before having to pay legislation requiring the city to create a one-stop-shop portal to get all their permits. And I also support the concept of a vacancy fee, so giving property owners a certain amount of time to lease out their storefronts. And if they don't, they could satisfy it. If they can't get a tenant, they could satisfy it with a pop-up artist pop-up in the storefront with an organization like Art on the Avenue that we did on Bleecker Street.
Thank you. And again, apologies for that. Should I accidentally skip anybody? Please do speak up. We wanna make sure we hear from each of you for all of these questions. So, the next question is, "The city is seeking to build a 600-foot-tall apartment tower on public land on Ganzvort Street in the Meatpacking District, which would consist of up to 75% or more super-luxury apartments. Village Preservation has demanded that all the market-rate apartments be eliminated and that the development only include affordable units. We're also calling for the size of the building to be limited to one-quarter to one-half the size currently proposed, which would allow for all of the currently proposed affordable housing. What are you demanding for this site? And what would you commit to approving or not approving, given that this development will require City Council approval?" So, this time, we will start with Eric.
So, as many of you know, my colleagues in government and I, when this came out, this proposal, we went to them requesting 100% affordability. We went to them requesting that the size be reduced. And that is what, with these RFPs out, coming back, we want maximum amount of affordability. We want something that's contextual with the neighborhood. This is public land that belongs to the people, and it should return the maximum public benefit to the people of New York City because it's our land. We wanna do it in a way that fits with the Meatpacking District and that returns the maximum amount of affordability to the community where we need it desperately.
Okay. Next, we'll hear from Louis.
Yes, I think everything that Eric Botcher said goes directly to the issue happening at NYCHA. NYCHA is public housing. This is city real property. And on Ganzvort, he's putting all these limitations, but the current proposal being considered for public housing involves putting up buildings, the approach being super-tall, just like what they're being proposing for Ganzvort Street. This is all wrong. For Ganzvort, I would never approve anything taller than six stories because historically, that's what was considered tall for this neighborhood for a very long time. Secondly, it should entirely be affordable because it's city real property. I would hand it over to NYCHA and let them manage it as public housing. We need more public housing, and the city has a horrible record with these lotteries for the buildings that are not affordable for the people who live in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Dominic.
Yeah, you're speaking my language on this one, also coming from the homeless shelters and knowing how important housing is and how less affordable it's becoming. I'm in total agreement with Eric Botcher on this one. We should have the most yield of our neighborhood, particularly if it's on public land. I would also reduce the amount in being in compliance to what your organization suggested, reducing the building size at least by half. We need sun, we need air, we need people who actually live in the neighborhood to remain in the neighborhood and not turn into some utopia where Manhattan is overrun by wealthier people. Not to say there's anything wrong with wealthy people, but they're all different types of New Yorkers that we need to preserve here.
All right, thank you. Great. By the way, to the public, keep putting your questions in the Q and A. I am reading them. A lot of them happen to be questions that were already on our list, but I see a few that we'll hopefully get to that are additional. And then, this next question is one of them. "So, the city is proposing to demolish the landmarked Tony D'Appolito Recreation Center, refusing to repair or restore the existing historic building. If allowed to do so, we would not only lose a beloved landmark, but set a standard for approving the demolition of landmark structures that would be unprecedented and have grave implications for the future. Will you demand that the city repair and restore the building rather than demolish it?" And this time, we will start with Dominic.
Oh, good. Yeah, Tony D'Appolito Recreation Center, I absolutely adore. I swam there when I was a kid. Didn't really swim because I didn't know how, but at least I tried. I love that Keith Heron mural. Absolutely 1,001% want to preserve this. It should be not taken away from us. There should be plenty of memories from other kids who want to enjoy that place. And also, the preservation of this with the Landmark Society, the Landmark Commission, with the Keith Heron there, I think we can really make an effort on saying, look, there's a Keith Heron there, and focus on that because that's one of his last larger pieces. So, 1,001% for preserving this area. It's near and dear to my heart.
Great. Next, we'll hear from Eric.
So, this is so shameful that the Parks Department has allowed the facility to get to this condition by disinvesting in it for so many years, not doing routine maintenance, and allowing it to be closed for so many years. We, as a community, need to decide what we want with respect to the recreation space at 388 Hudson. I would like to see some recreation space at 388 Hudson. Ideally, I would love to see the D'Appolito repaired and restored. Part of the challenge is that the Parks Department has not presented options to us for what that looks like. We have to get, as a community, with Community Board Two, we have to sit and come up with a plan, but we need something to react to from the Parks Department.
All right. And then, finally, Louis, same question.
Yes. Again, and again, and again, the incumbent claims he's powerless when it's government divestment that is at issue here. The rec center wouldn't be closed and become the subject of real estate speculation development were it not for the fact that the government has betrayed its responsibility to maintain public assets. The same story is happening at NYCHA. Whether it's the Parks Department or the local public housing authority, we need to ask ourselves, who's in charge here? Why does the incumbent get to make excuses that some other branch of government is responsible? Who is running for office here? Who is gonna represent the best interests of the public? Who's gonna represent the best interests of the community when it comes to... When it comes to zone busting, community crushing development, I'm gonna say save and preserve the recreation center. Thank you.
Thank you, alright, so the next question, uh, many initiatives geared to gear. Many initiatives geared towards addressing our city's housing affordability problems. Involve stripping away local zoning and landmark protections to create more and bigger market rate unaffordable housing. The idea being that building more housing, no matter how expensive, will trickle down in its benefits of affordability to everyone. Do you agree or disagree with this trickle-down approach, and if you disagree, how so? And this time we will start with Louis.
Let's look at what happened with Hudson Yards. Here under the prior um, council member, where the incumbent served as Chief of Staff, under him, he's, he served as the Chief of Staff for Corey Johnson. We had the most luxury um, housing built in this district compared to the rest of the city. Did that help lower the prices of rent in this district? No, it did not, it's, it's made it more unaffordable. Because the only housing that real estate developers want to now create in Chelsea. In, in, in-house kitchen, in, in the village and in the area surrounding Hudson Yards is more luxury housing, that's not affordable. There is no comprehensive plan to build affordable housing and it's impossible, it's impossible. And the only way it would be possible would be if the historical districts in this neighborhood, in this district. Were to be um, were to be flattened like the way they want to do to NYCHA, and we have to consider something else.
Right, uh, next we'll hear from Dominic.
It's interesting because the city of yes is, uh, I've been following this closely and does not require. Uh, affordable housing for developers, it's a suggestion, and I found that to be troublesome. Because we all know that a developer left to their own devices is not going to have affordable housing and we. This city council definitely needs to put pressure on them, I was deeply upset with the city of yes. Although with, they had good intentions, and I do feel that zoning in our city is definitely an issue when it comes to affordable housing. We all know nothing trickles down, and this is just another um, smoke and screen mirror that we're seeing. Where at the end of the day, the developer is gonna win unless you hire a city council member who's gonna say no to these behavior.
Right, and Eric.
There is a citywide shortage of housing and part of the problem. Is that we have whole swaths of the city in the outer boroughs who have not produced any. Affordable housing at all, in our district, we have produced, especially in West Midtown. Uh, more units than almost anywhere in the city and many thousands of those. Are affordable, permanently affordable units, but I have colleagues in the city council. Who represent places like Staten Island where you cannot build anything. And that's not fair, they have to do their fair share, especially near public transit, near subway stations. Everyone has to do their fair share around the city to contribute to the housing options, ask anyone. Who's tried to go out and rent an apartment. If there are options out there, we need every part of the city to contribute to this.
Thank you, uh, alright, next question, um, the city has refused to abide by the overwhelming public feedback it received. Calling for the proposed development on public land at three eighty-eight Hudson Street. To respect the scale of its surroundings, rather than to take the form of the tall setback tower. The city is current, currently encouraging for development on that site. Village preservation is calling for a building that matches the height and scale. Of the very large loft buildings to the south of the site along Hudson and Clarkson Streets. While the city's plan allows for a building two to three times that height. As this will require city council approval, what's your position on what should be built there? Um, and this time we'll start with Eric.
I want to see as much affordable housing, one hundred percent permanent. Affordable housing is what's currently planned for that site, but I do want to do it in a way. That produces the best possible building, uh, brick, stone. Really, uh, a beautiful architecturally significant building that matches. The uh, its surroundings, and I'm committed to working with village preservation and others to achieve that. While we also try to get the most amount of permanently affordable units for our community.
Hey, uh, next we will hear from Dominic.
Um, yes, similarly to uh, the question before, it's about keeping our neighborhood. Looking like a neighborhood and not having shadows from taller buildings, uh, offending their environment. It should uh, these buildings should be in part with the neighborhood around them. Sometimes uh, n- not double in size, I'm not totally against if there is a seven-story building there, go to eight or nine. I don't think that's too difficult to uh, accept. But when you have a story of fifteen to twenty units, a twenty-floor building, uh, that looks nothing like its surrounding. It rips the heart out of our neighborhood and I am just going to say no to all of this. When and if it ever comes across my desk as your council member.
Hey, and then Louis.
Yes, I, as I said before, I, I don't believe in um, I don't believe in insulting. The community by saying one thing and then doing another. Uh, I don't believe in super talls, I don't believe that construction should approach super talls, uh, any new construction in this district. Particularly since what's being planned for NYCHA is so grossly out of character with our neighborhood. Those buildings that are being proposed there are, are super tall or approaching super tall, same as for three eighty-eight Hudson. And um, because it's so out of character, because it's so out of character, that's what it appears to be. And as Dominic has said, the shadows from, from the new buildings at NYCHA. From all the way between eight, between ninth and tenth avenue will reach my streets, will reach my block. And I'm closer to the eighth avenue on eighteen streets, those shadows will, will, will put our, my block into darkness. I don't want that for anybody else and I'm gonna vote no to any super um, any community crushing development.
Alright, thank you Louis, um, so the next question is, the city has repeatedly failed. To ensure construction work doesn't result in destruction of either adjacent buildings or the actual buildings being worked on. Often resulting in historic landmark properties being destroyed and residents being forced from their homes. And these are often less well-off, longtime residents in rent-regulated housing who are being pushed out. Worse, the owners and developers responsible have suffered little if any penalties under the city. And some examples include fourteen to eighteen Gay Street, which is in the third council district. And ten to fourteen Fifth Avenue, which was in the third council district when uh, this incident took place, but is, is now has been moved into the second council district. Uh, what, uh, what have you done about this problem and what would you do about it in the upcoming term? In the city council, given that it continues, um, and we're gonna start with Dominic for this round.
I haven't uh, had any experience with preventing this from happening, this, it's just, uh, that's not where I'm at in life, but. I think ultimately to, pre- preventing it is important by having inspectors making sure that that these. Contractors are following the rules uh, to the, uh, to the book, to the tea. Uh, that plus protecting the buildings around it, the scaffolding of course would need to overlap. Um, safety first, as a maintenance person myself, it's all about keeping the, the property protected. As well as the employee, so I would start by the, the safety to check to see what, what, what exactly are they doing with, with their safety. Regulations and then move on from there.
Okay, great, uh, Louis.
Yes, uh, I think you left out of the theater that went down between uh, seventh and eighth on twenty-third street. The demolition of that building affected a cabaret bar on twenty-second street, I believe. And it had to close as a result of damage from that demolition. So all of this is a consequence that we live with as, as a result of non-stop. Zone busting, community crushing development, I'm gonna repeat this phrase over and over again because that's what we're living with. And I believe that we're dancing around the issue of, how, you know, how do we deal with the um. The consequences of, of zone busting, cu- a community crushing development without addressing. Zone busting, community crushing development, I, I think you can't go around it. And the responsible thing to do with, because so many of the buildings in our neighborhood are a hundred years old. Or older, we have to have responsible construction and that means nothing that's gonna damage other buildings.
Right, uh, and Eric.
As you know, Andrew, how, um, you know, I believe that it's unconscionable that the city agencies have not penalized. The property owners who caused this damage, we have not given up on holding. These property owners accountable, the property owner on Gay Street, we are in conversations with the district attorney's office. With HPD, with the Attorney General's Office, and we've had success in our district on forty-first street. Daniel Hebshalon, a no, a known slum, slum lord, attempted to harass his tenants. Out of the buildings, we were on the stoops, we were in court. We, I brought the commissioner to that building and now Daniel O'Hebshlon, that, those buildings are in the hands of a third. Party administrator and Daniel O'Hebshlon was sent to Rikers Island.
Right, uh, next question, um, uh, this was a, a question that we've uh, received from the, the public. What is your position on the proposed casino plan for the Western Hudson Rail Yards? You'll both get a vote on this at the city council and appoint someone to the Community Advisory Committee. For granting a casino license that must approve sighting there, so the city council member will play a very important role in this decision. What is your position? Um, and I'll start with Louis.
Thank you, I'm glad that you began with me, this is an issue that's very important to me, everyone in this district complains about crime. About uh, drugs and about uh, the, the quality and safety of, of people on the street and in the subways. Bringing in a casino into this district is just gonna spread more crime, it's gonna spread, uh, it's gonna create problems with people who have. Uh, addiction to gambling, it's gonna create problems for people who uh, look to casinos for um, other uh, vices. I think this is a problem for our community, it's gonna ruin our quality of life, whatever little bit we claim that we have left in this district. It's not a good deal for us, um, again, all of the city council's land use decisions. Revolves around enriching Stephen Ross, the owner and developer of Hudson Yards, we have to stop rewarding. Oligarchy and start, start worrying about the average New Yorker in this district, and that's what you can count on me to do.
Alright, uh, next we'll hear from Eric.
We are in the middle of a public process, we had our hearings last week and the community came out. And expressed a broad opposition to this proposal, so the, the. Uh, you know, to me, something like a casino needs to have a broad level of support. A critical mass of support in a community to be viable, it needs buy-in. From a substantial portion, you're never gonna have unanimity in a community. You're never gonna get New Yorkers to agree a hundred percent on everything, but it has to have a substantial amount of buy-in from a community. So we'll be um, making the decision on that shortly as part of this process uh, in the very near future.
Right, and Dominic.
Thank you, um, I hate to sound like a prude here, but I'm a totally against this one and. It's not just because it's gambling, which you know, doesn't bring, brings a certain element to our neighborhood, it's also just. Not appropriate and our neighborhood is objecting to this and so many times we have seen. Our neighborhood outraged by something that was about to come into our neighborhood and our elected officials said that. They are in favor of us and then they wind up voting in favor of whatever is to come. I have a father who, I had a father who was a, was a gambler. Um, he had a problem with it, he wound up selling a lot of our stuff, uh, when I was a kid. So perhaps this is too personal for me, but I don't feel that a casino is unnecessary uh. For any neighborhood and I would be completely against this, no matter what, I don't, I, not, even if it's uh. They try to convince us otherwise, it's, it's just should not be in the neighborhood.
Alright, thank you, uh, next is a, another uh, question from the public and you don't have to take the whole uh, full minute on this if you don't want to, but you're welcome to use it. Uh, and the question is, who are you supporting for mayor this year? Um, and uh, we'll start with Dominic.
Oh, um, this was a rough one for me because if you, those who know me, I've been fighting the city with my Supas group. So I'm basing my vote on that, those who sent the Supas back to work past eight o'clock for which we don't have a life for anymore. I will not be voting for, which uh, of course I would not be voting for Eric Adams, but uh, Andrew Cuomo. I am voting for him, he's not a perfect candidate, but I do feel like me, he will be fighting for our city and I think he's our best shot.
Right, uh, let's next go to Eric.
I have not uh, endorsed in this mayoral election.
Okay, uh, and then Louis.
This, the question was not about endorsements, it's about who you're going to vote for, I have not yet decided who I'm gonna vote for, I don't see anybody. Willing to attack the uh, the housing crisis, the affordability crisis that we're living through. And I have yet to see one mayor really stand up to the threat to democracy that Donald Trump represents. And the fact that we basically are living under fascism, I have yet to see someone demonstrate courage in the face of that, so I have yet to decide.
Great, alright, next question, this is going back to village preservation questions, uh, for about two years, we've been fighting to get uh. The old Our Lady of Guadalupe Church on Fourteenth Street landmarked, it is under threat, it is the city's very first. Spanish-language church with an incredibly rich history, in spite of the city's landmarks preservation commission. Supposed uh, dedication to a um, uh, what they call a diversity. Forget what, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting what the term is here, but they're supposedly committed to looking at a diverse group of um, potential landmarks, they've actually refused. To consider this site, uh, what have you done and what would you do to help try to get this site recognized? Landmarked and preserved, um, and we'll start with Louis for this one.
Thank you so much, this is a great question, um, I've been to that church when I first moved to New York twenty-five years ago, more than twenty-five years ago. I lived on Fourteenth Street and Eighth Avenue and um. I think the reason why the landmarks commission and, and everybody else involved with that church are giving it a pass. Is because the demographics in this neighborhood is changing radically because of gentrification and. And what's about to happen to NYCHA, NYCHA is ninety percent people of color, once that gets demolished, this neighborhood is gonna get much more white. And there's gonna be less of a constituency or a less of, of, of a representation in this community that would be patrons of that church. And so we need to consider, how are we, how is land use affecting the makeup of this neighborhood that would otherwise support that church? Uh, we have to uh, take a serious look at what is happening to the demographics in this um, in this community, thank you.
Alright, thanks, uh, next we will go to Eric.
Yes, I do uh, strongly support this landmarks uh, uh, designation and have written to. The Landmarks Preservation Commission with you and other colleagues both on. Uh, south and north of Fourteenth Street, like you said, Andrew, that this falls in line. With their stated goal, the LPC's stated goal of having more diversity and a more diverse. Portfolio of landmark designations, and so we should um, absolutely not rest until. This is landmarked because it, it particularly during this time that Hispanic communities are under assault. By our federal government, we need to do more here to support and uplift them, and I'm strongly supporter of this designation. We need to do more here to support and uplift them and I'm strongly supporter of this designation.
Great, and finally Dominic.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I actually wasn't aware that Our Lady of Guadalupe Church was in jeopardy. I actually, I've gone there a few times. They have. Every summer they have a a barbecue and a party on Fourteenth Street, so this is kind of troubling to me. And something I will be focusing on, because as I mentioned, I'm a preservationist. I don't like when something is taken away from the neighborhood, particularly in the minority. Community and I do agree with uh, uh, Mr. Flores uh, when he said that this is just another way to uh. Break down the Spanish community. Um, how I would go about doing this though is I would find out more information about the building. Is it, who was the architect behind that? What year was it born? Was, what was it before? Was there, what's the? What special events have had, had they had there? And ultimately, this comes down to once again, the landmark commission, which is why it's so important that we. Put the right people into those positions, but I'm going to focus like on um, on this. I wasn't aware of this, my apologies.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, next we're going to another question that we've received from the public and it does involve the. The question of NYCHA and NYCHA housing. Uh, it basically says NYCHA is under uh, an incredible amount of pressure and there have been. Many different proposals for how best to address what is an incredibly important resource for affordable housing. Not just in the third council district, but citywide, and that's involved everything from potential demolition and redevelopment. Uh, mixed use uh, developments, uh, repairs, building on open space. What sort of approach uh, do you support? Um, and what do you believe is the solution to the challenges facing NYCHA? Um, and I'm going to start with Eric for this one.
So the proposal in um, Elliot Chelsea and Fulton Houses involves rebuilding. The buildings from uh, scratch with new buildings. I was in Hoboken. A few weeks back where they are rebuilding their public housing. I met with my counterpart over there and their public housing authority. What my priorities are to ensure that any new buildings are contextual with. Chelsea, brick, stone, uh, uh, that that fit with Chelsea and that augment. The neighborhood. And we're talking about storefront with storefront retail. Um, community-led retail for the tenants, increased healthcare facilities, groceries. More community space with no displacement at all of any existing tenants.
Alright, uh, alright, next we will hear from Dominic.
Uh, thank you. So this is another example of uh, deinvestment. We wouldn't be in the situation to begin with had we not had the. Right politicians who have been funded, who were, should have been funding this to begin with. Otherwise, these properties wouldn't be falling apart. I don't, I'm not comfortable with moving people to. And then claim that we're going to bring them back to have a brand new home. I've seen this before. It it rarely happens. People either. Move on because they can't wait that long or they're, that these affordable housing situations never happen. Why can't we invest in keeping Fulton projects the way it was? Why can't we be, make sure that NYCHA is fully funded? Why can't we make sure that they're managed by a property management company that gives a damn? I think that's the answer. I'm not into moving any of them from the Fulton projects. I've, I'm very fond of that place. And they don't want to move. They're friends of mine and I will be making sure that they won't.
Great, and uh, Louis.
Yes, the solution to NYCHA's problems is actually fully funding section nine housing. Uh, we, we, I'm glad that we are all here gathered uh, tonight because the incumbent Eric Botcher believes in ending section nine. Public housing and putting everybody onto section eight vouchers. However, this plan would only work in a world. Where there is no Donald Trump. Donald Trump is in the White House and he's threatened to end section eight, uh, section eight rental assistance vouchers. So we're, I don't know how it would be considered humane to end section nine. When we have a president who's going to, who's threatening to end section eight. This is insanity. Secondly, um. The plans that have been uh, proposed for Fulton and Elliot Chelsea have not gone through ULP. I filed an article seventy eight to compel. The city to put the plan through ULP and uh, we need to see what the judge has to rule, but I accept, expect that we're going to win that lawsuit.
Alright, thank you. Alright, the next question also from the public uh, involves the issue of outdoor dining in our city. Uh, what is your position about the appropriate level, uh, appropriate placement, appropriate um. Decision-making process for uh, outdoor dining in our uh, neighborhoods and uh. This time I will start with Louis.
Um, thank you very much for this question. Uh, I believe that outdoor dining adds to the experience that we want to create in our district. Uh, we want to have people enjoy the outdoors. Um, it, for me, uh, makes it um, a much more pleasant experience. And the aesthetic, I believe, is warm and welcoming. It's better to have outdoor dining, in my opinion, than to close streets. And and put tables on asphalt. Um, I think that is taking this to an extreme, but I think. Outdoor dining is is a responsible way to allow people to enjoy the outdoors and is, at the same time, helping small businesses. Um, being able to serve more customers. I think it's reasonable. I think the city should make it a, a, an easy application process. And uh, subject to computer, to community approval, um, I believe that it's something that we should embrace.
Hey, thank you very much. Uh, Dominic.
Uh, this is a great question. This is kind of one of my pet peeves. I'm all for adding to the ambiance of our neighborhood and eating outdoors. But let's face it, some of these restaurants are taking over our streets and they're taking over our sidewalks. I would uh, reduce the amount of sidewalk cafe or if if you're going to have a sidewalk shed, I don't think you should have a sidewalk cafe. Because then the waiters are running back and forth and I have friends who are in wheelchairs and they can't even get down the street because of that. And if you're going to have a sidewalk shed, you should only have one of them, not like Lulu's who have two or three. In addition to having a uh, uh, ca- uh, cafe, sidewalk cafe. It's one and the other. You shouldn't, we, we should be thankful that they're here and help them with their business, but we shouldn't give them the, this whole store. And the whole neighborhood. They should be regulated.
Alright, thank you very much. And Eric.
I too like outdoor dining. I love walking down the street on a warm New York City night and seeing people. Out dining al fresco. The critical question though is regards bad actors and. Restaurant tours who don't respect the neighborhood. We have some dining setups that everyone likes that are really no problem at all. And then we have others that turn into more of an outdoor bar instead of a restaurant. And we have this new system in place. It's the first year it's happening. I think we're going to learn a lot more. In the next few months and we need to see how it goes in the next few months, ensure that the rules are enforced. Ensure that the licenses can be issued because we have restaurants who've been waiting for months. It's almost the middle of May. They still don't have their. Uh, permits, but let's see how it goes and make changes as needed.
Alright, great. Uh, next question also from the public. Uh, New York's real estate industry has deep pockets and. Very strong influence over public policy. What is your relationship to this industry? And ha, will you be taking campaign donations from uh, real estate developers, I guess this means? Um, and why don't we start with Dominic?
Oh, um, thank you. Um, being a building superintendent, I come across these uh. Property management companies and and developers all the time. And I've never once been in a situation where a developer. Said that they're going to do what they're going to do. Normally what we see is with Hudson Yards, we're going to have all this, this one building that's going to be for affordable housing. And then what winds up happening is they don't have any money for it. I'm, I will not be accepting any money from developers whatsoever. Um, I don't want to put, make people, turn people into evil people, but. I have not yet once met a developer that didn't screw over our neighborhood. So I'm against them.
Alright, uh, next Eric.
I am one of the few elected officials in New York who is not accepting any contributions from. Real estate developers or employees of lobbying firms. I've um, I, I did that in my last cycle. I'm not accepting those contributions in this cycle either.
Okay, and Louis.
Thank you for this question. Um, I'm not accepting donations from real estate, um, executives, developers or their lobbyists. But I want to point out that, you know, it's appropriate to call a fa- a fact check because in the last election cycle, the incumbent Eric Botcher. Was a beneficiary of a super PAC that, that was funded by Rebney and, and that would only ha, take place. If his policies supported nonstop gentrification in this district. He was seen as their favorite candidate. And they put together a super PAC and they helped him with um, advertising. And this goes to, to his record of siding with real estate, which is why he doesn't oppose, which is why he cannot. Demonstrate clarity tonight and, and uniformly oppose the, the demolition of NYCHA or the construction of the casino. Or anything else that's going to be zone busting or community crushing in this district.
Hmm, okay, thank you. Um, alright, we have uh, one more question from the public. Uh, otherwise I think we've gotten to all of them and that is uh, tell us what you are doing about housing for seniors. There's a huge need for more and affordable housing for seniors in our neighborhood. What are you doing to help make that happen? Um, and what policies do you support? And we'll start with Eric for that one.
The need for housing for our seniors is, um, it's hard to describe how painful it is to get calls and emails from seniors in our neighborhood. Who are desperate for more affordable housing in our neighborhoods. That's why it's easy to say, let's not build. This, let's not build that. We do need affordable housing for our seniors in our neighborhoods. And that's why I'm committed to allowing for the creation of permanently affordable housing for our seniors in our communities. They don't want to have to go to the Bronx. They don't want to have to go to Brooklyn. They don't want to have to go to Queens. We have to allow for some of those opportunities in our districts so that lifelong seniors, many of whom live in la- and walk up. Apartment buildings who can't go up the stairs anymore so that they could age in place and enjoy their golden years in our community.
Alright, uh, thank you, Dominic.
Uh, thank you for the question. Um, I think the only way to solve this problem is with quotas. If we, if there are a certain amount of uh, people who are uh, older in the neighborhood who. Are, who've been here for quite a few years, they should get priority to any of these new housing developers, developments that are popping up. Twenty percent would be sufficient. Those who are of a certain age should be first in line to receive those benefits of, of. Being a neighborhood, being a neighbor for all these years and to, so they can enjoy the rest of their lives here. I want them to stay here. This is their home. I am, I have a soft spot for uh, my older friends in my life. Um, and I'm death laser focused on making sure that that happens when and if I'm your city council member. Thank you.
Great, and Louis.
Okay, number one, I would, as I said, stated repeatedly, I oppose the demolition of public housing because many people living in public housing are elderly. And retired. They live on fixed incomes or very low incomes. And it's important not to create more displacement of people who can't afford market rate rents. That's number one. Number two, I believe because the city has, has a city-based housing rental voucher assistance program. That seniors who are uh, experiencing um, rental distress or, you know, who are rent overburdened. They should be able to qualify for rental assistance so they can stay in their homes so that they don't get evicted or feel like they. They're going to be uh, removed from their homes for lack of being able to afford the rent. There are reasonable programs and policies that, that a responsible city council member would undertake and that's what you can count on me to do.
Great, thank you very much, everybody. Well, we've gone through all of both our questions and the public's questions, so now we're just going to. Allow each of you to make a closing statement, which we're going to do in the reverse order that you did the opening statements. And I'm actually going to allow ninety seconds for each of those. So let me just change the clock so that we have that. Whoops. Hold on. Alright, so you're going to get ninety seconds for your closing statement and that's going to start with Dominic.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, as everybody, uh, as I've already said, I'm, I'm born and raised here. I think uh, that's what separates me from those who are also running to be the city council member or the incumbent. And it matters when you're from somewhere and you tend to want to protect it more and it means more to you. With my activist work, I, I've proved to be a fighter. Um, I'm in a fight still with city hall with my Supers group. I have two rallies coming up in the next couple of months. Fight, fight, fight. It's important to fight and I'm a fighter. And I have that in me. Um, with the homeless shelters that I've been through, I have the experience of, of, of knowing. How important um, quality of life is. Um, I just want my neighbors to know that. They would feel safe with standing by me. Just stand by me. I, I know the way out. I, I have, I've come with good ideas. Um, I will be actively reaching out to you. I'm not going to disappear as some council members have when they got elected. And I'm definitely going to return your phone calls unlike some of the council members we have today. Just stand by me. I promise that I'll, I'll be a great servant to you. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next Louis.
Hello, um, thank you for having us. Thank you for participating and thank you for staying on, staying on with us until the end. As you can tell from the sensibility of everything I've answered tonight, I'm running as an outsider. I too have been homeless. I spent seventeen months living in the public hel- pu- public homeless shelter system, which was horrifying. I also lived at the Bowery Mission. And um, even that was not everything that it is made out to be. I think it's important to look at your lived life experience. Here I, I was able to call out of being homeless by renting a room in a townhouse. I had to get a job at, at a supermarket where we deal with a lot of, a lot of shoplifting. And you'd be surprised to know that shoplifters are not stealing uh, the, a box of eggs or a jar of mayonnaise because that's what they need. We're having people come in who steal a lot of many items that they go out into the street and sell. And that goes to show you that people are not able to find a job that they can do and instead they turn to thieving. There, there's a, there's a lot of policy failure that is the creation of the upheaval that we're experiencing in our daily lives. And I believe that at this time, the, the best public servant you can count on is someone who's. Going to stand up to the irresponsible real estate development and that is me. Thank you.
Thank you, and uh, we'll finish with Eric.
A lot of folks know my story, but some don't. I'm, I'm not from New York City. I'm from a very small town in the Adirondack Mountains. Outside Lake Placid, New York, where like many LGBTQ people, I struggled during a time when there were not gay role models. There were not uh, laws protecting us like there are now. And in New York City, I found. Home, I found refuge, like thousands and thousands of people over the last four hundred years. I found my, a community in New York and I've dedicated myself, I've dedicated my life to giving back to New York City. And now the city we love is at a crossroads. We can either further transform into a place where you need to be wealthy. To live. You need to have true wealth to find a place to live. Or we could be a city where artists can continue to come here. Someone like me who came here with a couple bags and a few bucks, rented a futon in someone's living room. And ended up as a New York City council member. We can continue to be the New York that we love. But only if we make the right policy decisions, ensuring affordable housing for all while also maintaining. What we love about our city and that is our historic heritage.
Hey, thank you very much. And so thank you to all of our candidates. Hey, thank you very much. And so thank you to all of our candidates. Um, Eric Botcher, Louis Flores and Dominic Romeo. Thank you to all of you for, uh, uh, participating uh, and, and watching tonight. Um, and again, in the chat, if you want to, uh, see any of our past candidate forums, we have a link to that as well as more information about our campaign about preservation and affordability. This was recorded. We will share the video with everybody who registered and we will push it out on all of our networks, so please do share it. Um, thank you, everybody. And, uh, uh, the link to the videos also has information about when, uh, the elections are, both in the spring, the primaries and the general uh, in the fall. So do make sure you're, uh, aware of that and take advantage of your, uh, right to vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew.
And have a good evening.
Thank you. Good to see you, Eric and, uh, Luis.
Thank you, everybody.